All the meeting, the regularly scheduled Board of Selectmen meeting for January 18th to order at 7:02 PM. And we have all members in attendance. So I'd like to next move to our Pledge of Allegiance. So if you could join me in our Pledge of Allegiance. My Pledge of Allegiance, I pledge allegiance, excuse me, to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Any additions or changes to our agenda tonight? Right, hearing none. I'll move to public comment. This section of the agenda is reserved for persons in attendance who wish to briefly address the Board of Selectmen. The Board requests that a person's comments be limited to a single period lasting three minutes or less. While the Board respects the right of the public to provide comment, this time is not intended for open discussion or a Board response. Residents who wish to request a dialogue should make arrangements to do so through the Town Manager's office or the Board Chair. Persons wishing to comment should type comment and your name in the chat box and you will be recognized. Donna, do we have any public comments?
There's nothing right now. We will have another opportunity at the end of the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I will turn it over to Andy and the good to know special recognition, which is number five on our agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Welcome, Board members. I'm very pleased to announce tonight, along with us, we have Thomas Case and PAC number 28 Hebron Cub Scouts. They're working towards their Build a Better World badge slash pin to move themselves along in their stride to become, I think, Weebos and Boy Scouts. And then hopefully we get a couple more Eagle Scouts. Hebron's been pretty good at producing those. So hopefully some of these young men that are on here tonight can follow through on that. But they've asked if they could do an interview, which we've conducted prior to the meeting, but they're also here tonight. I'm not sure, Thomas, if any have any questions for any, the Chairman or any of the Selectmen, or if the Selectmen have any questions of these young men and women.
Tanner, Tommy, do you have any questions?
I don't think I have a question.
Okay. No, so Tanner and Tommy are working towards their, they're working towards completing their Arrow of Light requirements, which is the last step in Cub Scouts before they get to crossover. And the plan is to have them cross over in February into Scouts. So this is their last step along the way in Cub Scouts and they'll be crossing over into scouting here in February. So very proud of the two, two boys who stuck with it throughout the COVID years. Made the best of what they can. You know, the Cub Scout motto is do your best. And these two, two young men definitely did that throughout their years in Scouts and I'm very proud of them. So thank you for the opportunity and the recognition here. It's very much appreciated.
Looks like Dan, you wanted to say something?
Yes, wanted to congratulate them on this move. It's rare to see that kind of dedication. As, as Andy had said, our Town Manager, we've had a number of Boy Scouts go up through Eagle. We've had a number of them showing their, their projects, you know, to earn their Eagle Scout awards. We've also had a number of girls with the Gold Award process, yeah, that the girls go through. And it's great to see people do scouting, especially nowadays when there's so many commitments on their time, pulling them so many different directions. So congratulations on this final step and we hope to see you in a few years with your Eagle Scout project.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Dan. Any other Board of Selectmen member wish to comment?
Yes, I would love to. So hi y'all. I'm Claudia Riley. I am giving my hat to you, to you both and to your leaders. Speaking as a former scout, girl scout for many years, also a recipient of the Gold Star Award many, many moons ago. But I will say this scouting does produce great leaders. And what I would love to see maybe one day, either of you may be sitting in one of our chairs one day as a future leader of our town. So great job. Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Thank you, Claudia. Anyone else wish to comment on the Board? Well, thank you. Thank you, Andy. And obviously, thank you for bringing these fine folks in front of us and giving them the opportunity to be exposed to our government, ask questions, and obviously I echo everyone else's sentiment and applauding you for the path that you're on, knowing full well that you will be the type of leader that, in the future, that our town can be very proud of. So thank you very much for your commitment to service and thank you very much to your leader for his and others, I'm sure, that are, might be not on the call, that are leading these fine young people down this path. So thank you very much.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Tierney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The next on the item would be the Town Manager's report. For the audience, that's where I give a report of the activities of the office. We're in full-fledged budget mode. Not only do I oversee all the department heads for the Town of Hebron, which I'm working with to finalize their budgets, that's going as well as could be expected. But also the Chairman of the Board of the Chatham Health District, which I'm, hopefully, we're going to have a public hearing at the end of the month, but we had our preliminary finance meeting where hopefully we're going to come in flat, the same as pretty close to last year, which is good news. Some other news is we've enjoyed our insurance premiums since we went self-insured. And we've been spending down some of our contingency because when we first started off, we were doing so well. We were building a little bit more of a reserve than we probably needed to have in there. So we've been carefully spending that down. But now we're at a point where we, we have to cap it. So we're, in the past couple of years, we had a minus six two years ago, and I think last year was a 1.3 or 1.5. This year, at this present time, we're budgeting a 16.5%. If anybody's insurance, I know some of them on the Board do, and there's a five to 10-year trend. So we've, we've trended very, very well. That was what gave us the capability of going self-funded and building that reserve. But now our loss ratios have started to get caught up in that trend and are quite a bit higher. So we're still in good shape. We're still, even with that type of percentage, a single plan of insurance to the consortium. I've been told by our consultant, Brown and Brown, is still $200 a month cheaper for a single person on a plan if they are in our consortium versus on the state's plan. So just kind of a way to judge that. So all those budgets are coming together. We're putting them all and compiling the information and we'll be meeting the deadlines and bringing those numbers to you. It's no surprise that we've been dealing with quite a bit of rain, then now snow, and then now ice. So the crews have been busy. A lot of people in town are affected by this amount of water that, that we've had in the ground and runoffs from certain downspouts or properties uphill and other properties downhill are causing our zoning. And Public Works people that go out there and examine some of these situations. The last storm was a babysitter. It started out as snow. The guys were out all night, worked all day, straight through, and then had to go home around seven o'clock or so for safety reasons and came back in early in the morning. But what happened was we got all that rain and then the temperatures dropped below 18 degrees is when the salt we use really is not effective. Below that. So the roads were packed and a little bit icy until the sun came out the next day. They continued to work and reapply material. But those are, those are the costly storms with overtime and the amount of material you need to combat the ice.
Andy, if I may just ask you to maybe provide some context, under what circumstances in a storm should a resident think of calling the town for assistance? Like, you know, tree falls? I mean, what are the scenarios that we respond to? Residents calls? And under what scenario should a resident consider calling the town?
Well, normally the town's responsible for the town's road system and right away. If there's a, if there's a tree that falls in a residential area, that normally would fall underneath the fire department or emergency services. And we would go out there if there's any immediate danger to relieve that immediate danger. And then if it was a private issue without any immediate danger, then we would, you know, advise them to hire a contractor to, to deal with the situation. But we, we have the 911 system. We have the Public Works that monitors the phones during the storm. I also, we also monitor social media and our emails most of the time. So we encourage residents, if they don't know who to call, to call us and we'll try to advise them the best we can. And we always encourage patience and professionalism to try to understand that we have 160 lane miles of town road. And everybody's can't be first and somebody's always got to be last. So we, we do the best we can. And I think for the most part, the Hebron residents work with us in a, in a, in a very good way.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Next on the list was, we're dealing, like I said, we're dealing with the flooding due to the high water. So we're combating that. We conducted interviews, first round of interviews for the children's librarian for the Douglas Library. Tomorrow, I'll be meeting with the Chairman of the Board, along with the Library Director, to have the second round of interviews and hopefully select a final candidate to make an offer. And then we're working with the two projects that we have, the two projects being the Wall Street sidewalk. And I know it's a little bit confusing because at the same time, we're going to be doing the Wall Street intersection, which is Route 316 and Route 66. Those improvements, we're going to widen that. We're going to work on the lights and the crosswalks and make that a safer means of egress for both the commuting car traffic and pedestrian traffic. So those have been long-awaited projects that are finally having the contract signed and starting to kick off those meetings and get that moving. We anticipate both of those projects to start up in the spring, hopefully in the month of April. So that's taken up a lot of time and that's what we've been working on. So the budget's the top. And then moving some of these other longstanding projects forward is also a priority. And that's all I have for right now, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. That moves us to item 7 on the January, which is
Actually, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. I have a question for the Town Manager. I noticed in the Finance Director's report that it's indicated the 2023 audit is complete and will be signed off on this week. Will the Selectmen receive a report on that or information regarding that?
Yes, Tiffany, thank you. That's a very good question. So what, what normally happens is the auditors meet with the Board of Finance first and they go over the audit and then it normally comes to the Board of Selectmen after that. And if the Board of Selectmen wishes to have a presentation, we can have that done as well.
That'd be great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Andy? Okay, thank you. Okay, so item, or section seven, old business. First item is the American Rescue Plan State and Local Recovery Funds update. And what's being presented here is the decision, requesting ultimately the decision the Board made to have a special dedicated workshop, which will be held Monday, January 29th at 7:00 PM to be the status of all ARPA projects. So we look forward to that. Does anybody have any, obviously we have the workshop, so I'm not expecting we'll get into the ARPA list specifically. I know a couple of items were highlighted. Andy, is there anything that you wish to note to the Board in advance of this, the workshop?
Just, just some generic comments. I apologize. I was sick at the last meeting. So I want to thank Donna for handling that meeting. And we continue to update that as, as it moves along. And I know Tiffany wasn't there, so I'm not sure. But I don't think we have any more projects that are, say, they're being continued. We pretty much have progress reports. We do have some that are like in design stage, like the Martin Road or like the pickleball courts, they're in planning and zoning. But I think we note that. We just, we just don't list them that they're in progress. We're trying to be a little bit more understanding to the questions. And we should, we'll definitely have the latest update for the January 29th workshop. But in going over that with Donna, we're starting to realize that some of these projects, there's, there's quite a few that are now starting to be completed. So we're hopeful that that'll be a good report when we do meet.
Okay, anything from a Board member for Andy on this? I know we have the workshop coming up, but clearly if anyone has a question. No? Okay. Thank you. Just for those following along, we're, we're moving to C. The other B is Parks and Rec update, which does not require any discussion or action at this time. And the Public Work Action Committee is something that I am happy to provide an update, just following up from our last session. The, we did establish a communication committee. So that, you know, obviously is a critical component of the, bring this information to the public. We have connected with the Hebron Facebook group to start that dialogue, to see how do we effectively intersect with what has over 4,700 members. We should be thinking about that. So that connection has been made. We met with the, with the town regarding our website approach. So that is ongoing. We have reached out, when I say we, myself and members of the committee have reached out to the, to the River East. And we're trying to determine how we can best intersect with the River East, since that is clearly a, a medium that the public prefers in terms of their communication. So we're working through that, but have reached out and spoken to the editor. And there, there's ongoing discussions with the approach of the River East. We are developing the first communication piece. We'll highlight a lot of the things that we've done already. So there's a lot that we're going to be able to report on. Obviously, I mentioned last time, we did, we were taking the tour with, with our Public Works Director, Paul Forrest, and had that, that was, that's been completed. We did meet in another meeting with the folks that had provided the original detail with architectural designs and schematics. So we went through that, those original plans, to make sure we sort of understood the basis of the original assessment of Old Colchester Road, so that has taken place. And then working with Andy to, and he's done a good job of demonstrating patience. So I commend Andy on that, working with the folks at Eversource to just assess if there's any options for us, as been previously reported, to, to expand the property that is currently owned by Eversource. So there's ongoing discussions there. And we've, I shouldn't say we, Andy's made some very good progress in making connections there. So those discussions are ongoing. Because ultimately, at the end of the day, in the assessment of Old Colchester Road, it is critical to really understand how much land we're going to be working with to ultimately continue with the additional detail about what can fit there and how that may or may not impact the public going forward. So a bunch of information, but I'm happy that a lot of progress is being made. And when we do provide that update to the public via the website and other means of connecting with the public, there'll be something of substance to report. So that's what I have on that. That is, are there any questions?
Yes. Hi, it's Claudia. I have a question for Andy. Andy, thank you for your work on this, in this very, very important topic. In your opinion, with the purchase of, purchase of land currently owned by Eversource, do you feel like the addition of those parcels are adequate for the DPW's future needs?
That would be, had to be determined by the design engineers, depending on, you know, groundwater treatment, how much area we would need for that. And I'm not trying to avoid the question. There's a lot of moving parts and I'll try to explain it as, as generically as I can. So one thing that might open the door is, one thing would happen to happen for another thing to happen. So the Eversource, if you're standing in the street looking at the 550 Old Colchester Road, which is the Public Works facility, to the left is the Eversource property. Still a piece of property to the right, which is owned by the Odd Fellows or called Camp Connecticut. That's a small strip that really is the only frontage or the access to their property in the back. And that's presently where the Public Works Department employees park right now. We're kind of off property. So they would not be inclined to sell that to us to help us on that side of the project because it would land lock their parcel. What they're using now to enter their property is actually the Eversource property, but they don't have any type of written agreement. So in trying to help you understand what I'm saying, if we were to possibly, so Eversource doesn't want to sell us a parcel. They don't want to sell us a couple acres. Like, if we needed three acres out front, we would have to buy the whole parcel, which is, I think, about 33 acres. They're not interested in subdividing. They would want us to purchase the whole thing, which I don't think is a problem. But if we were to do that, that possibly could free up that other section of land that might help us in designing the area we need and still keep the transfer station. But that would all be up to the engineers that tried to design out the project. So I, I wouldn't be able to answer that tonight, but I, we would, we would try. We know that's what the people want. And the, the reason we walked away from that back in the day is when we pretty much had an agreement at one point to buy that property from Sal and P. We had the soil scientists go out there and they discovered man-made wetlands. And that was right in the area where we were looking to expand. So that's kind of what changed our mind at that point. But now that we're back down there, there's a couple of things we could try that I just, just described if it comes to fruition. But it kind of hinges right now upon Eversource's response back to the town.
Right. Terrific. Thank you.
Any other questions from the Board? Okay. Thank you. We're going to move to 7D. Andy, the current Public Works facility update?
Yeah, just a quick one. We've, you know, we had some issues with the roofs and the roof was redone with a coating, whether it was a latex or oil-based coating. And we still noticed there was a couple leaks, so they came back and that's been repaired. So that's fixed. So in the spring, we're going to have to do an RFP for the amount of money to upgrade the roof on the cold storage building across the way from the actual Public Works facility. So that's the update for tonight.
Questions? Dan, did you have your hand up? Yes, sir.
Yes. I just wanted, you were saying how the, the staff had to go home, you know, to get rest. I'm assuming that's because there is no resting facilities at our current site. Is that correct?
Yeah, if they could have, I guess you're right, Dan. They could have, if we had the facilities, they could have rested there. There's a certain amount of time you have to break them after so many hours for safety reasons. But at that point in time, we don't, you know, it was getting, you know, towards seven o'clock at night. We don't mind the, you know, the roads were in good enough shape to send them home where they could see their family and get a hot. But if it was a, like a blizzard or something like that, yeah, that would have been a problem. Because there is no facility to stay over or perform those types of, you know, cleanups.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, thank you. That moves, we then move to 7E, which is the Charter Revision Commission update. And we have a few things in this area. And I guess the first, maybe to potentially address, is we have these two proposed resolutions. And then there is, I think, an opportunity we should take to discuss the, some of the, if anyone has any additions or deletions to the charge of this commission. Ultimately, we've been working from a list for some time now, but just an opportunity to discuss that as well. If I remember correctly, Donna, was, did you say that it was most appropriate for Tiffany to handle the first proposed resolution? Is that, Tiffany, do you, I'm just, I remember if that was accurate or not?
I think so, because I think
Because you made it or the original, okay. I'm sorry. Go ahead, Donna. Maybe we're trying to speak.
Sorry, I was just going to say it's, it's not required, but I think most appropriate since she did present their original resolution. Thank you.
So if you're comfortable, Tiffany?
Sure.
Be it resolved that the Board of Selectmen rescind the resolution adopted on December 7th, 2023, regarding the establishment of a Charter Revision Commission.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. Dan?
Dan Larson, aye.
Keith Pettit, aye.
Thank you. Tiffany?
Tiffany Teeling, aye.
Thank you. Claudia?
Claudia Riley, aye.
Thank you. Claudia, Peter Casper, aye. The resolution passes unanimously. Thank you. That moves us to the, the second proposed resolution on the screen. Keith, would you be so kind?
Be it resolved that the Hebron Board of Selectmen has determined it is appropriate to establish a Charter Revision Commission consisting of seven members pursuant to the provisions of the Hebron Town Charter, Chapter 12, Section 1207, and Connecticut General Statutes, Chapter 99, concerning municipal charter and special acts. Volunteers will be solicited to serve on the Charter Revision Commission and the appointment of the Charter Revision Commission will take place on Thursday, February 15th, 2024.
Resolution's been read. Any discussion? Okay, no discussion. We'll move to a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay. Or if you wish to abstain, please note that as well. Dan?
Dan Larson, aye.
Thank you. Keith?
Keith Pettit, aye.
Thank you. Tiffany?
Tiffany Teeling, aye.
Tiffany, Claudia?
Claudia Riley, aye.
Thank you, Claudia. Peter Casper, aye. The resolution passes unanimously. And we also have in our packet the Charter Revision items that were identified. So it's an opportunity here, if I may, to ask my fellow Board members, is there anything on this list that you wish to discuss? Any additions, deletions, anything that we can do to associate with this list? Or I think there's an opportunity now to discuss that. Does anybody have anything to add, subtract, adjust, suggest? Keith?
Yeah. If I may, I know that we already have a couple of items on here related to budget regarding, you know, different departments and different responsibilities. I think the WPCA is mentioned, the Board of Ed is mentioned, other such things. But I also noticed that, you know, it might be, it might be good for them to review the Budget Responsibilities section of the Charter. You know, there's some, not, not ambiguity, but I think it could be clear what the responsibilities of the Board of Selectmen, the Board of Finance and the Board of Ed are in, stated in other areas and then outlined in the Budget section specifically and how some of their responsibilities overlap. So I don't have a specific addition right now, but I would ask that they review the section of the Charter on Budget Responsibilities for the different Boards.
Thank you. Tiffany, I see your microphone open. Do you have something on that?
Yeah, just two quick thoughts. I, I agree, I, I agree with Keith on that point. I think that's critical. The first thing is, is that since this is going to be a two-year process, I mean, I'm certainly not going to object. I'm going to object to removing anything at this point because we are doing a rather elongated process. So I think everything on here can stay. I could think the only other question I had was number 14, which is combining positions of the Town Finance Director and the Hebron Public Schools Business Manager. I know there was some concern, I think, that you, Keith, had mentioned. And there was some question when we had started the discussion if that should stay on purely from like a legal audit perspective. And I just want to resurrect that again and see if we're comfortable leaving it there or if it's something we should consider removing. I think that's the only item I consider removing. Thank you.
Go ahead, Keith. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I, I agree with Tiffany. I have some concerns regarding that because it's a, it's a very fine line. You really have to, to thread the needle. You know, there's, there's legal distinctions that have to be observed between those positions. I'm not saying that it can't be done, but definitely if it's something that, you know, I, I don't, I don't know how I feel about it as, as part of a, a Charter review item because it would have to be flexible enough to be able to change itself and update itself if state statute changed regarding the responsibilities of those positions. There would have to be significant, you know, There would have to be significant, you know, references to technological oversight and things that specifically refer to internal controls and compensating controls and making sure that there was segregation of duties in financial systems. And, you know, I don't necessarily know that those are items that should be in a document which is only able to be changed every five plus years. You know, it could be a cumbersome way to to look at that possibility. If it even is possible, it would have to be done in a way that, that would be fluid enough to react to change more than just throwing it in the charter. And I'm also kind of hesitant because putting it in the charter makes it a requirement of the town. If it ever came to a point where it was absolutely unable to be continued, then all of a sudden we'd be in violation of the charter. So it's, it's a very delicate subject. That's, I just want to throw that out there.
Thank you. Dan?
I, yeah, along that same line, with the ever increasing budget of the school systems. I think we at some point in time and, and to, to, just as a preamble, the state had fired that shot across the bow, if you will, as to what they were going to do for supporting school districts, i.e. the size, number of students. At some point in time, I think we as, as a community are really going to need to look and, and try to talk with the other communities about regionalizing the entire school system under one you know, central office directive from K through 12 on all three towns. You know, our numbers of students are pretty much stagnated. And yet the costs are going up almost a million dollars a year, I believe, from what I heard. You know, at some point in time, we need to financially look at what's going to be best and also you know, what's going to be best for the students to have, you know, one central office, one central core curriculum as compared to, you know, the three elementary schools basically doing their thing and then Ram having to try to blend the three schools into one system. So where all that comes and how all that plays with the, with the town charter, I don't know. But, you know, these are other thoughts that really need to be weighed in on, I feel.
Thank you, Dan. Claudia, anything you wish to add to the discussion?
At this point, I do not, but I do appreciate everyone's feedback.
Okay, and I appreciate as well, I think Keith and Tiffany outlined some, some things to consider on that particular item. My bias personally is, you know, I like the discussion on it, so I don't have a problem leaving it on. And obviously, the commission will get into the details and to your point, Keith, you know, is it too delicate of an issue to do within the charter? But I don't, I don't, I'm not against the discussion. And Dan, consolidation. You just threw out the, you know, we need to move in that direction as a community, but there's a lot there, no question, and some good thoughts. So with that, I think we're in a good spot to, to move on in terms of this item unless anybody else has anything they wish to add. Andy or Donna, anything?
Sure, I'll, I'll throw my.
Yeah, thank you, Andy. Go ahead. Yep.
So once again, I think Keith raises, raises a very good point. I think it can be done. And the reason I say that is because I know other towns that have done it. But it has to be done correctly. But to memorialize it in the charter, I'm not sure that I have to agree with Keith. I don't, I think it would have to be an agreement upon the two entities to move in that direction. I'm not sure it's a charter issue.
Are you suggesting that it just be taken out altogether? Or is it something that can at least lend itself?
I'm just giving my professional opinion to the board that's going to make the decision, but I can name several towns that do do this and they did it for financial reasons. I'm not sure they were regional school districts from seventh on up. But I, I have had conversations with the town attorney because the only reason I'm even weighing in on this and Danny can back me up is at one point, the next item is town manager's evaluation. One of my goals was to try to make this happen years ago. And it's like, it's trying to nail Jello to a tree. You gotta have two entities want to make this happen before you can even proceed. I don't think the town and even the charter can force the school district to do this that they don't want to do it. And I know that's not what some people want to hear, but I think, I think Keith is on to something. I think if that's what the community wants, you could, you should still have a discussion around and maybe how you want to proceed if it gets taken out of the charter or just have the blunt conversation. If that's what the community doesn't want, then we need to move on.
Yeah, and we can clearly take it out at any time, or if it comes before us, you know, we'll have the final decision on it. So it's something that maybe we should be thinking about. Yes, Dan, did you want to add something?
Yes, I, I think it would be dangerous to leave that in the charter. I agree with having discussions on it, but I think that's more of a operations issue. You know, as it's been said, you have it in the charter, that becomes your Bible. So you, you want to be cautious when you start doing things like that, that you don't back yourself into a corner that you can't get out of.
Can a charter allow, I don't have the answer. This isn't a rhetorical question. Can the charter allow for that as a possibility in terms of, can it allow for it? So if indeed those discussions happen over the next five years? Or is it just not the place for it? Does it have to be definitive that this, we must do this? Or can it allow for a consolidation as, as a method to at least confirm that it's a possibility that the town would approve that in terms of being in the Bible that we would consider that? Or is that, Andy, is that, you know, just too vague? It has to be black and white in the charter?
Yeah, I think, I think the charter is pretty black and white and I would have to ask the town attorney. I'm not into that personally.
Okay, I mean, it seems to me like from listening to the discussion, there's at least, there's a majority of the board with support from Andy that suggested this item, and thank you Tiffany for bringing it up, probably shouldn't be here. Clearly, it's something that we should be thinking about, but maybe this just isn't the place for it. Is that, is there a, Keith, you have your hand up? Go ahead.
Yeah, sorry. I, I know I continue to weigh in. I apologize.
You're on the board. Way in.
But, you know, whether it's, I, I, I definitely am agreeing with Andy and Dan and Tiffany, like, I see where everyone is coming from. This is a very sensitive issue. I also see, see where you're coming from, Pete, of the same mindset that this is something that at some point is going to have to be discussed. So whether we make a committee three years from now to explore the possibility of entering into like a more fluid document, let's say an MOU between the town and the school board to combine services. And we make a committee to explore that. Or whether we leave it on here for the Charter Revision Commission, which, you know, may have members that can contribute good information to that, that topic and possibly build a repository of information for us to make decisions with going forward. I, I agree. I think we're of a mind that whatever comes out of the Charter Revision Commission, this isn't something that we would actually let go to referendum to be, you know, placed in the charter, you know, memorialized. But that basis of information there would be available to us where either we or Andy or, or, you know, Andy and Tom could move forward on what would an MOU look like that has some of this basis of information that they went through the effort of gathering. So, you know, whether we do it with the Charter Revision Commission, which has two years to do their work, which is a ton of time. Or whether we, two years from now, make another committee that looks at an MOU for combining town services for whatever reason. You know, the information is still going to have to be gathered and discussions are still going to have to be had. So I'm fine with leaving it in here with the understanding that it's, it's mainly for the gathering of information for some solution in the future. Probably not the charter.
Claudia, I see your mic. Are you wanting to add to this discussion?
I think as far as this particular issue goes, that would be really on us to make sure that we have some folks on the commission with that type of background, either as school personnel, school administration, someone who can speak to it with some experience and skill set. I think that would be helpful if, if line fourteen does stay, stay in consideration. And then as far as the language goes, obviously would have to be very clear as to whether or not it would be flexible. I don't know if flexibility is even a word that you use in a charter, in a town charter. Maybe not. And then the, this is just, it's important that we look at the data. As, as Keith said, we have, you know, the two years. So let's look at enrollment, you know, what's going on presently and what are they projecting out and and see if the trend is going towards smaller school population and then we address that as it happens. But the data is important.
So why don't we do this? Since we have, we have another meeting in two weeks, why don't we leave it on for now? We'll leave the Charter Revision Commission detail on the old business. And we'll have the time to continue to, to assess the comments that we've all made and, and think about this. But clearly, there's no urgency to make, to take action tonight, but we'll leave it on as old business if everyone's in agreement with that. Yes, team. Okay. All right. Thank you. So unless anyone else has anything on that topic, we will move to F, seven F, which is any other old business. Andy, anything?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I don't know of any other old business. Okay, so that takes us to Section Eight on your agenda, which is new business. And eight A is to discuss the town manager's annual evaluation. So if I may, what, and those that have served on the board with me in the past, obviously Dan and Tiffany. And thank you Tiffany for your work last year. There's been, you know, some inconsistencies with the formatting. We sort of take it on almost, it feels like a new task every year. I don't know if that's how you guys feel, but I, I have taken the time to, I'm going to put something together. Actually, I have a, a, a structure of it, not quite ready to share with you, but it will be prior to the next meeting of a template that we could consider using as a, on a go forward basis that would outline the key functions associated with town manager's job to provide clearer, more consistent communication of the method of which we'll be evaluating our town manager going forward. An opportunity to have a consistent rating scale and, and input. And then a document that also clearly articulates goals. I have a format based on, I have met with Andy and got some good feedback from him. So thank you, Andy, for that, as well as some example, an example that, that he's seen used in other municipal interactions or evaluations. I use my own background, having been doing performance evaluations for a very, very long time and thinking about also as a taxpayer, you know, what do I want to hold the town manager accountable for in terms of services and, you know, the sort of the big buckets of financial management, town services, emergency services, communication, staff development and support, you know, some of these key metrics that, and then, and how do we together as a board agree that on the measurables, and that sometimes is a little hard, but let's get some measurables and that's where I'll need some feedback from Andy and we're continuing to have those discussions. But my objective, I just took the liberty of saying, let me, let me put something together, bring it to the board to review and see if we can together agree that we can structure something going forward. So next year, it'll be a little bit, the communication with Andy will be clear, will be clear on what we're, how we're evaluating him. We can adhere to hopefully the January deadline, which we won't adhere to this time because you haven't seen the document, you haven't weighed in on it. So it won't be done in January, but my objective is that it's done in February and we'll also then have to agree as a board on how to communicate any potential change in compensation to be reflected in the budget process as well. So that's sort of ahead of us. So I know I sort of just hijacked this item, but if everyone's agreeable to that, I will continue to move down that and, and bring that document to you for your review and input with some feedback from Andy. So, you know, because I don't want to create something that he then says is not attainable or measurable, you know, those sort of things. So I need some additional input, but I should have that in the next week. Have that document prepared and would want to leave that on as old business with, again, your input and feedback to finalize that document, hopefully in the next, by the next meeting and then finish the process in early February. If the board is in agreement with that, I will continue down that path. If, if I've taken a left turn, I turn it to my fellow board members for input. Are you, is that silence, is that stunned silence? Or are you okay with me continuing to, to move down the road? Yes, Dan?
I continue.
I'm like, oh my goodness, they're looking at me like, I just, I just figured I would take the initiative as the chair to do that and then look for your input rather than burden like we did last year. Tiffany, you know, had to take, take, take up the baton when we needed some support, but I just thought I would at least move in that direction if everyone's comfortable. And then again, you'll have complete transparency and input. You'll be able to provide your input and together we'll finalize the document. Good? Okay. All right. So obviously, well, if that's, if that's fine, unless, Andy, you have anything you want to add to that section?
No, I don't, no, I don't believe it this time.
Okay, thank you. So item eight B is the approval of the budget review schedule. So attached is a proposed fiscal year twenty four to twenty five budget review schedule for March. The budget workshops to be held with the Board of Finance at the Douglas Library Community Room. So Claudia, if you would be so kind as to propose the motion.
We move that the Hebron Board of Selectmen approved the FY 2024, 2025 budget review schedule as presented or amended.
We should have read any discussions relative to any potential amendments to this schedule. Keith?
I don't know if it needs to be necessarily amended, but if, if Andy could, you know, this is, this is my first time looking at it from a Board of Selectmen lens. I, I know that the Board of Selectmen has a certain budget oversight of, you know, the, the general town offices and, and some of the departments. But there is specific language that exempts us from anything other than commentary on elected positions or budgets that fall under elected positions. So I would just ask, because it, it doesn't, you know, these are all group meetings with Board of Finance and Board of Selectmen. So there isn't really a designator that says which sections we are actually taking action on and which sections we are only commenting on. So I guess I would just kind of like, you know, a little bit more information on that so that I know what sections you know, actually pertain to us taking action.
Andy, any thoughts or comment on that?
Not trying to make this into layman's terms, but and I'm digesting what Keith just said. So you, you kind of nailed it on the head. We're in charge of all the department budgets. So the first one is the town manager's budget and the CIP would be in charge of the open space and let's say in this government. Of course, Ram Board of Education is just that. Hebron Board of Education is just presenting. It's just that. And then we go back into municipal government, general government, which is your preview, you being the Board of Selectmen. And then it's town departments, parks and rec, public works, fire department, planning, miscellaneous, general government, Board of Selectmen, public hearing, outstanding, and Hebron Board of Education if needed. Even though the Board of Selectmen doesn't have line by line control of the Board of Ed, they do, or the Board of Finance actually at that time does, the three budgets come together to think up what the mill rate would go to referendum for the taxpayer. So there would be some discussion possibly by the Board of Finance on the, the bottom line of the amount of money that would go to referendum and that would include both Hebron Elementary Schools budget and the town budget. But as far as the workshops, Keith kind of, kind of hit with all the government budgets being presented following the Board of Selectmen's preview, but the Boards of Ed is just that, their presentations at that time with no action needed by the Board of Selectmen. I don't know if that clarified it enough or you, you're looking for.
Yeah, I just want to, I just want to make sure that those are the only ones that, that qualify because, you know, the, the way the language is written, it says any elected official. And I know. And I know, like, you know, planning and zoning is elected and and, you know. Some, there are some other elected positions. If there are funds that specifically fall under their purview outside of ours. I'm not currently aware of them, so I just didn't know if that was something that needed to be. Separated out or not.
Okay, no, I probably over responded then. So all the departments, whether they're elected or not, answer per the charter to the town manager. And then the town manager puts that in his budget, presents it to the Board of Selectmen. You weigh in on those those budgets and those departments at that time. And you can have deliberations as we go through the budgets without any questions regarding that, whether it's elected or open space or planning and zoning.
Okay.
Okay, any other comments, discussion on this? Okay. It's time to vote. Dan, all those in favor, signify please by saying aye, oppose, nay, or if you wish to abstain. Dan?
Dan Larson, I, just as a footnote, I have my continuing education. On March fifth, so I won't make that one, but I'll just. Review the tapes or the minutes or whatever. So.
Thank you. Keith?
Keith Pettit, aye.
Thank you, Tiffany?
Tiffany Tealy, aye.
Thank you, Tiffany. Claudia?
Claudia Riley, aye.
Thank you, Claudia. Peter Casper, aye, passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Next HC on the agenda is the draft agenda for the February first, two thousand and twenty four meeting. I know Claudia, you had presented something and obviously so that, so any other additions or anything to that agenda, please send those to the town manager's office. And then that agenda will then be finalized for February first, so. Unless there's anything we need to talk about there, I that's, thank you for doing that, Claudia, and anything else, please contact the town manager's office. To make those adjustments. Thank you. Any other new business? From the board? Seeing none. Andy, anything in the new business section that you wish to bring before the board?
No, thanks for recognizing me, Mr. Chairman. Not not any new business, but under Claudia's request, I I don't even know if that needs to be an agenda item. I think we were just going to prepare that if the rest of the selectmen are okay and just have that ready to. Be voted on. I don't know if we, if you want it as an agenda, we can do that, but.
Whatever, whatever normal, we've done these before, so whatever the normal process is, I'm fine with that. I just. I think of it as an agenda item, but no, just follow the normal protocol there. Thank you.
If everybody's okay, we'll just add it to be voted on.
Okay. Anyone opposed to that? Okay, all right, thank you. Thank you, Andy. Moving to item number nine, this is the consent agenda. The consent agenda items are considered to be routine in nature, which the board may not need to discuss individually and may be voted on as a group. Any board member who wishes to discuss a particular item? In this section may request the chair to remove it for later discussion and a separate vote if necessary. So, under the consent agenda today, tonight, we have the approval of the minutes of January fourth, a regularly, a regular meeting. And the list of tax refunds. Is there any item that a board member wishes to remove from this? Okay, so I'll make the, I'll present the proposed emotion, excuse me, the proposed motion that we move that the Board of Selectmen approve the following consent agenda items and motions contained therein as if individually adopted any discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor? Dan?
Aye, Dan Larson, aye.
My favorite, oppose, nay, or abstentions. I apologize for moving through that too quickly. Keith?
Keith Pettit, aye.
Thank you, Tiffany?
Tiffany Tealy, aye.
Tiffany, Claudia?
Claudia Riley, aye.
Thank you, Claudia. Peter Casper, aye. The motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. We move on to now number ten on your agenda, which is the liaison reports listed in order. I will go first, the AHM Youth Services. There is an oversight meeting, what they entirely oversight meeting, which is a comprehensive meeting in which they I will be attending. Going through their accomplishments, the budget, the the way the town intersects with AHM or the other towns we've represented that is scheduled for February twelfth. Also, so after February twelfth, I will have an update on the AHM Youth Services. So that's my update. Tiffany, anything from the Board of Ed that you wish to share?
I do. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the Hebron Board of Education recently proposed their budget. I think it's important to note. That it's an evolving document, and it's incredibly preliminary that the board has not yet had an opportunity. To make changes and such. I can tell you that there's no new programming proposed and no major staffing changes are proposed. Within that budget, so it was a good presentation. I think it's going to go through several iterations before. The board presents on it to the Board of Finance. I also want to encourage everyone to participate in Hebron's Public Schools Pizza and Budget Forum. That's going to be held on Wednesday, February seventh at five thirty at on the Gilead, at Gilead Hill. They do require you to RSVP if you will be partaking in pizza, but I think that's a great opportunity to open up the dialogue in the community. A lot sooner so that we do not have a repeat of last budget cycle. And that's what I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Tiffany. Dan, Board of Finance, anything from the Board of Finance?
Uh, no, actually, they meet next week, so. I have nothing report because they haven't met yet. I I asked that the town staff put that. That February seventh, was it? Notice out to us just as a reminder. Since those of us without having kids in school don't. Get any of those types of of emails from the school system. So I would ask that that get put out to us. Thank you.
Thank you. Keith, land acquisition?
Yeah, actually, that that's fantastic news from the Board of Education, because now I can go and get a slice of pizza. Right before the next land acquisition meeting, which is happening on February seventh at seven PM. So it will be land and pizza for me. They have not met since our last meeting, nothing new to report. Their next meeting will be February seventh.
Thank you, Keith. Claudia, the Ram Board of Education.
Before I go into the Ram Board of Education updates, I would like to know where the pizza is coming from. For the workshop. And that will determine whether or not I will be attending.
So that hasn't been indicated, so I say just go and have a taste test and see if you can figure out where it's from.
Oh, there you go. I like that.
Just a couple of short updates from Ram Board of Ed. So as you all may or may not know, there were a few. New additions to the board, so in the spirit of education and preparation. The Connecticut Association of Boards of Education will be providing some education in. A roles and responsibilities session for the, for all of the Board of Education members, so that's that's great news. And then. Secondly, they have begun the budget planning process, and the first draft is going to be distributed at the upcoming meeting. On the twenty second. And I will be there to check it out.
Thank you, Claudia.
Yep.
Okay, so that that constitutes the liaison report, so thank you very much for that. That moves us to item eleven, which is public comment. Donna, do we have any problems? Well, go ahead, Donna, you're managing that section. I see Terry.
Yep, Terry Mc, Terry McManus.
Go ahead, Terry.
Evening, everybody. I. I'm gonna talk, and if the questions. They're rhetorical. I'm not expecting any answers. At a P and Z meeting the other day, we were going over our bylaws, and there was a section in there that just. Made me feel really good, and essentially. It was the ability of board members to add. Items on to the agenda to be discussed upon if something were to come up from the public. Keith, you and I have seen each other at board meetings for years now, and one of the most frustrating things with the Board of Education. Has been standing up in front of the board and giving comments and not having any response whatsoever. According to any number of different rules. This board has just changed its rules, and what I'm seeking for, seeking right now. Is clarification as to what we mean by. Residents who wish to request a dialogue should make arrangements to do so through the town manager's office. Are we saying that citizens can come to the town manager's office? And request a dialogue with the board at one of these meetings? And if so, is there a back and forth? Does it become an agenda item? And my question is, aren't we making this a little bit? Too formal to the point where residents may not wish to give input? Besides that, that's about all I had. It's how would a resident actually talk with the board as a group of people? And possibly get some feedback? Thank you.
Thank you, Terry. Donna, any additional public comment?
Looks like that's it for now.
Hey, thank you, Terry, for that. Thank you, Donna. Based on that, we move to item twelve. I defer to any member of the board in this section.
Move to move, we adjourn at eight oh two PM.
Thank you. We need a second. I don't know. Keith, you're a second. Thank you. All right, with that, the meeting is adjourned as indicated by Tiffany. Thank you very much for your input, participation and preparation, and good night, all.
Good night, everyone. Take care.